Good evening. It is.
All set.
All right.
The same thing.
Good evening. It is January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, and I would like to call the special meeting of the Groton Board of Education to order. In attendance is Jay Whiteloff, Matt Scholman, John White, Andrea Hackerman, Dean Antipas, Ian Thomas, and myself, Adrian Johnson, and Mike Whitney will be joining in a few minutes. So with that said, our first order of business is discussion of safety and security. And at this time, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters concerning security strategy and/or the deployment of security personnel or devices affecting public security. I would also like to invite Floyd Dugus, our board attorney, Susan Austin, the superintendent, Clint Kennedy, the director of technology, Anne Marie Mancini, the assistant superintendent, and Sam Kilpatrick, our director of finance.
Facilities.
Oh, I'm sorry, facilities, can't read my own writing. All right. There you go. We are in executive session. Thank you. All right, it's eight twelve on January fourteenth, and I'm bringing the Board of Ed out of executive session and back into the special meeting, into open session. And at this time, we would like to.
Excuse me, but you need a motion and a second to return to open session.
All right. Sorry, I'm new, so I'd like to make a motion to exit executive session and come back into regular session.
Now we need them second.
I'll second. Bye, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're back into regular session and. You have to have a full vote? Yeah, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstaining? All right. So now Susan, our superintendent, has something to say.
Yes. Tonight, I updated the Board of Education regarding the threat that was made against Groton Public Schools earlier this month. We engaged in a discussion about safety, security measures, and I want to assure you that the district has been working closely with the town police and the city police to enhance security. Additional resources have been made available, such as counseling and, you know, other resources that would be needed by students and staff because of this. On Thursday, January sixteenth, representatives from the Board of Education and the district will meet with Chief Fassaro, Chief Burton, and Town Manager John Burke to further address these concerns. Administrators, teachers, staff, and police officers remain committed to maintaining safety and security. We will be highly vigilant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. With that being said, the next item on the agenda is to continue the budget work session.
Thank you. And we'll talk about that. Oh.
Yeah, thank you.
Would you like me to orient you with some of the new documents first?
Yeah, why don't we start? We had some, I guess, light modifications to the formatting. Is that correct? Was there any numbers changes or was it just?
It's just the percentages were added for the object code.
Right.
And then another document was sent out. Unfortunately, I sent two of the same documents, but then I sent the other, which is the function codes. And we were able to hide the zeros, so we made it a more comprehensive package. However, we're still working on getting the narratives. The narratives have been updated, they just need to be revised. And we also, if you remember, the function code from last year, it includes the FTEs. So it's all very comprehensive, and so I want to make sure that it's nice and clean and ready for you. I had said that we will make sure that you get all of those documents, hard copy in the mail or however you like them sent. And then also, I've been sending them out digitally as well. So you can actually replace the object code summaries with the percentages to replace the ones without. And we will get you the hard copy of the function codes, which will go in the back of the book by this weekend.
There's an electronic copy of the function code or email?
Yeah, you have the digital copy, but we want to get you the refined copy that also has the narrative and the FTEs, so that you've got everything in front of you. Adrian and I spoke today about the budget calendar, so if we could start with that. When we look at next steps on Tuesday, January twenty first, we will start going through those function codes with the elementary and special education. There is also a question about the public hearing. There is a public hearing on February tenth, but because I wasn't able to do it on the thirteenth, I think we had talked about postponing it to the twenty first, so that would mean that you'd have like two public hearings, so I just wanted to make sure that's what the board, you know, is expecting. I put it down there, I highlighted it because I just wanted to check in with you all.
Yeah, so we originally, I believe we voted or there was some kind of agreement that we were going to have a public hearing on the thirteenth, so it was just moved because of, you know, just because of others.
Readiness.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So does everyone? Is there anyone that objects to having it on the twenty first at this point?
Does Bev know? Because she'll be the one conducting it.
She was in that meeting.
Yeah, she was.
Yeah, yeah.
The last I talked to her, I believe that it was still on as far as she knew.
And there'll be another one on February tenth?
Yeah, I mean, Ian can speak to the intent of this public hearing, but I think it was before, the intent, I believe, was after we had the budget presentation, but before we got into the nuts and bolts of it, before we started making changes and kind of adapting it into the board's budget. I believe that was the intent.
Right, yeah, I mean, in theory, the first public hearing would have happened, you know, earlier in January, and then we would have had like a a presentation week and then like getting in, have the public hearing and then get into some work sessions throughout January and then do the joint session with the RTM Town Council and then have a public hearing after that to kind of shift gears into the more like rigorous part of.
So is that per the ad hoc committee? Because in the past, what has happened is that we do the joint Board of Ed, Town Council, and RTM, and then go into a public hearing.
Right, yeah.
We used to give them the heads up first, I think, but if you want to do two, we can do two.
Is that, is that one on the tenth a joint? Because at some point, we have a joint.
Looks like on the fourth.
Historically, my memory is that, yeah, there used to be just one public hearing. It was combined with the joint session of Board of Ed, RTM Town Council, where there was like two sessions in one night, where there's a public hearing.
That's what we did, I think, last year, right?
Yeah, well, no, we never did the public hearing last year.
We did a public.
Oh, no, we did the public hearing, but we know, we never had the joint session afterwards. We just took hearing and then we all left.
Remember the joint session.
There wasn't much of a joint session. But we all sat up there together and listened to the hearing.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, the thought with the ad hoc committee, if my memory serves, and I, you know, encourage my fellow members to jump in if I don't get it correct, but we're thinking on trying to like bookend a certain section where, you know, this superintendent's budget would come out, be presented, and then there would be a public hearing after that. And then there would be almost like a month worth of our work session.
Right.
Where we started really converting it into the board budget. And then we'd go have the joint session with the RTM Town Council and have that public hearing where like the budget would be mostly in transition towards the board-approved budget. Due to, you know, the shifts that have had to happen, you know, now it's a little more compressed window. So.
Well, we have really the full month of February.
Right.
Until we have to deliver it, which would be on February twenty eighth.
Right, so the idea, I guess, with the preliminary public hearing was, I mean, basically, this week is turning into presentation week, where we're receiving all the information. We're going to have like the final superintendent's recommended budget by the end of this week. That, I think, still falls in line with the intent of what we're trying to capture, where now like we could have a public hearing on the twenty first, and that would give us as a board some public input to work with as we go into our deliberations between now and, you know, February fourth. Or is it February fourth or fifth that the joint?
Well, what I understood was the Town Council has their normal meeting on a Tuesday, February fourth. So when we asked about the fifth, the Town Manager had said that that's hard to get people out again on Wednesday, and he recommended that we come to the Town Council meeting.
Are they gonna have?
And then they would have the RTM, they would invite the RTM education representatives.
Yeah, my only question with that was like, you know, how would, how would that work as far as, you know, parliamentary procedure? Who's got the gavel?
Well, it's a Town Council meeting, right?
Yeah.
I mean, but that's something that we can, you know, just double check on to see.
I mean, the fact that it would happen on Tuesday, February fourth, that would line up with the first Tuesday of the month for the Town Council, where they normally do a public comment. And they also do public hearings typically before public comment. So I mean, I could see the efficiency in coupling up like that. But I just do want to, can we close out on the twenty first? For right now, saying, oh, we're all good with having one on the twenty first? That's for us to have a public hearing?
No, it's Tuesday, after.
Tuesday, January twenty first.
Would we be able, would this be at thrive fifty-five or fifty-five thrive?
I think we're still waiting to find out where it will be, but we've got to do that quickly. It's coming up.
Yeah, because there is no way we can conduct a public hearing in this room.
Right.
What about a Fitch?
I just don't know, Clint's not here to find out if they'd have the equipment to do.
We'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah.
I would say thrive fifty-five because that's where the, you know, the community's been accustomed to having it in the past.
Yeah.
So I would say.
We just might need the town support in setting it up.
I thought we just did it straight through the, well, yeah.
No, that one's different.
Yeah, well, you were on the RTM, so the meetings were scheduled through which person?
They were always there, but it's the AV that they come through, so like Sean Greeley come in and do it. And it's a whole, it's a whole scene in there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Not just turn on a computer.
It's a system of space.
You show up. They're serving food.
All right, so getting back to, getting back to this.
Talk to Joyce.
Right. It's the Town Council, actually.
So, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, we have it in here as the tenth, maybe a public hearing. But we're, so, yeah, on the fourth and the tenth, fourth, fifth, or tenth, that we can work out later. For right now, can we just make a decision for
My first.
twenty first, a public hearing that's just for the board?
That's fine.
Does anybody? Does anybody disagree with having that?
Florida's too.
I don't know if we can, can we have a vote?
Well, I'll make the decision, schedule something.
It's already on the agenda. Just, I guess it would be, is, do a lot of people disagree with having it on the agenda? On the board agenda, which is labeled draft.
So it's a Tuesday, so it's not a regularly scheduled meeting, we haven't noticed it yet. I just.
I think they're all kind of special right now because we've just agreed on our new meeting schedule. And that was on there, on our original one, for at least doing the board budget work. So the only thing that was added was the public hearing.
Mom, if you don't think we need a motion, that's fine. My only comment would be, if we're going to have a public hearing, when does information about the proposed budget, anybody's budget, go out so the public can come in and say, love it, hate it?
Is this, is this budget available to the public now, the superintendent's budget?
I will check to make sure it's online. It should be.
The other thing, I guess the other question, previous question should be, do we typically publish the budget? Or is it just a public hearing? People come in and say, I don't know what your budget's going to be, but here are my priorities as a taxpayer, as a resident, as a parent, or whatever. I don't remember, to be honest with you, when the past, how informal.
But we never had two of them, so we used to have, well, we'd have one right after the RTM Town Council, and then we'd also have one when it became your budget. So we would have one, I think.
Could we reframe it as a public input hearing? And to give you, give the public a chance to voice their
Yeah.
wish lists and distinguish it from the public hearing as a document that's pretty firm?
Yeah, because this is just the initial draft from, you know, the mind of the superintendent, right?
No, more minds than mine.
Say, here's the proposed
Do it by myself.
Education budget. That might get, you know, set the pigeon, you know, the cats among the pigeons unnecessarily. So, yeah, I like the idea of saying, look, we're working on a budget. We'd like to hear the public's input, people who are aware, want to be aware, want to learn, have ideas about what are we going on the schools, come on and let us know what you think. They don't necessarily need the budget document in front of them so they can say, wait a minute, on line fifty-three, it says, and I don't like that number, you should spend more.
Well, I typically, when we do a public hearing, we typically orient them to what the budget priorities are. And, you know, take them through a presentation of some kind.
But you can do that, you can do that in the public input hearing by saying, presenting our order to business tonight is to give you an overview or a presentation, and then we're going to open the floor to see if you have any ideas or priorities that you should be considering as we come to with a final budget proposal for you to have another public hearing.
Well, and this is just the initial phase, right? That this is just the startup, but it, you know, they can get their input.
Because there are going to be people, whether we like it or not, but there are going to be people who are going to be looking at the numbers, and they may want to have, be able to comment, they could come in with a general question. I don't know what your budget's going to look like, but just so you know, I don't want to see any increase over the last year. Or they come in and say, are you crazy in this proposal, or I love it, this is long, you know? In other words, you're going to have some information, that some people should have some information.
Well, I agree.
General priorities, or the qualitative things, or there are the quantitative things. So something is going to have to be out there for people to chew on, otherwise, folks that would say, I'm in support of or I'm against on the basis of quantitative data, which I'm not getting, so this hearing is not for me.
Is it worth, is it worth a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars to buy an ad in the weekly advertising rag? So that goes to everybody in the town in Stonington.
To be honest, I just don't remember how we've done this in the past, when people have come to the mic, and we've had either short nights or sometimes very, very long nights, with eighty people show up and that.
We've never done it this early. So we've always had the budget out there, we've presented it, and the town liaison group has worked together, and then we do the public hearing as we've had time to work on it a little bit.
And you'll put a notice out, probably a parent square, that we're having the budget hearing.
But it doesn't get to the general public.
There's also legalities, I think, when it comes to, if we're going to call it a public hearing, we have to notice it a certain amount of time ahead of time.
Right. Do we know?
We can, we can make the legal notice and still not inform the majority of people, you know? I don't want to do that.
You think we might have already gone past it?
I think we may have already passed it.
Like accepting public comment or something like that?
We could do a public listening session or something like that, but I don't know. A public hearing, I know there's legalities, I know that a couple of times on the council, they've gotten tripped up because they didn't get a notice out in time.
Oh, I don't want to do that.
And right.
How about if I get, if I make a few phone calls or have Joyce make a few phone calls about setting up a public hearing and what's required? And what's the timeline?
Is there any way we could send an email to somebody and then just continue working and come back to this in an hour or two, if somebody can look that up for us?
Well, if we're going to be here an hour or two, I'm sending Anne Marie home.
I think we do.
Because it's too late. Yeah, it's already eight thirty, so an hour or two is like.
Does anyone else have any good contacts that could check in on that? Can we continue on? Oh.
I just want to say, I'm going to rejoin in on hybrid now. Get someone.
All right.
Yeah, I'll be here.
All right.
I might come back in a second.
But Anne Marie, I really do want, go on and hit the road. We're just going to go through the object code and, yeah. And the rest of the, you know, orient them with the rest of the information. I live around the corner.
I'm okay with circling back to this. I can do a little bit of research, right?
All right, so we start on page two dash two with percentages and kind of
Yep.
skim through it. Not necessarily skim through it, but since we already went through it, we'll see if if anybody's mind changes on things now that we have percentages.
I just don't want somebody to see this, I think it's a lot of. Have a safe ride home.
Thank you.
I know we talked about this yesterday, but other staff, line, just line item three, we'll.
Are we going to put in footnotes in the next iteration?
Footnotes?
For example, health staff, and it jumps, you know, for the cost of the nurses, and, you know, just jumps right out.
I think she said they were going to put in the object code one.
Yeah, we're going to put it in the function code two. They have a narrative.
Yes, yeah. Function code.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So administration is just at point two percent. Teachers are two point two. Other staff, that is where all of our paraprofessionals and our tutors. And we did say we added about five or six EL tutors to the group, so that is part of it, but it's also their contract. Remember, as they go through the years, we really up those contracts year to year. And there's also steps included too for them. So that's why you see that jump. Substitute teachers. We basically we really tried to cut back, but we found that when you look at FY twenty-four, where we spent one point three million. And last year, we budgeted eight twenty-seven, so now we've kind of rectified it with nine fifty to give them a few more building subs, and so it is an increase. But it kind of gets us not back to where we were, but, you know, to give us more coverage in our buildings.
Susan? Oh, Adrian, sorry. Can we maybe get a summary sheet of new positions that were padded as just like a clip? Because if we didn't have the new positions, these percentages would be lower, and it's being masked because that FTEs year over year is not being shown.
So one of the things about the staffing that's really dynamic, especially in the area of other staff where there's paraprofessionals, is, I think Lori had said it last night, where last year we had a hundred ninety-five, this year, the number's more like two oh five. So we've had to increase, and that's based on student need, it's coming in and out of the district.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So if you had a summary, plus ten for, you know, at least it's sort of like, oh, because someone not realizing that there was a plus five or plus ten would be like, wow, that's a big increase for that population. So if you can identify that, yep, plus ten, people can do the math in your head that, yep, that's approximately the majority of the increase. So just a summary of anything that is new.
Okay.
I think I would like to add something on that, but not just new, but changed positions. So, because we're going to get into this, but there's retirements that were positions that we're not filling. So, so not just new positions, but changes in the way the system, you know, the schools are functioning. You know, because if we're, if we're, you know, I know we're losing some pairs in the high school, but we're adding them, you know, so the net number might only be ten, but there's going to be a big shift of where they are.
So when we get to function code, you also have the FTE part. So maybe there's a way that in that FTE, you can look at what was last year and then what is this year? That might make more sense to put it there.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
That, that doesn't capture some things, though. So like if we have a French teacher that's retiring and we're not going to fill the position, like, we'd like to kind of know that or some, you know, that type of thing as far as, you know, position changes. At least I would like to, I shouldn't say we. So let me know if anybody else is, is or is not interested in knowing that. But I personally would like to know, you know, like staffing changes.
I think that's always happened, that we would let you know.
Maybe that could be in a different meeting, because I don't really think that what changes are made has anything to do with the budget. In other words, you know, if it's a French teacher or whatever, we don't, that could be in a different venue.
Well, I think during the process last year, you recall, and the several years, that the high school, we, because of some of the scheduling and being able to fill those classes better, we've taken a few FTE, you know, subtractions. So over time, I would say there's probably been at least five to eight FTEs from the high school that were removed, and we kind of let you know what those were, and they were based on retirements.
And I think that information is vital, but I'm not sure that it has to do with the budget.
Well, it does when we talk about budget allocation. So in my opinion, when we talk about where are we spending our dollars, you know? Because if we've got savings in one place, we may want to spend, you know, more, you know, TK or something like that. So that's kind of why I think it is, you know, related. You know, I mean, you know, like, French seems like it's less desirable based on some of the numbers these days. It's not as popular as like ASL or Spanish.
We only have one in each of the schools.
Well, I'm just using that as an example. We may be understaffed on French teachers, and I don't want to, and I appreciate our French teachers.
French teacher.
I appreciate our French teachers. I'm just saying that, you know, if there's changes, you know, we are deciding where in the, you know, we're not just voting on a number, we're deciding where those numbers go in the budget. So I think that it's, I think that it's valid personally.
We just have to find out where the best location is.
I see your point.
All right.
It's not a. I see your point.
All right. Thank you.
So we had talked about the health insurance, and you know that in line ten, that's including the million dollars of OPEB that we had to pay ourselves back, or, you know, pay towards OPEB and take care of that responsibility, and we also want. Or, you know, pay towards OPEB and take care of that responsibility, and we also wanted to make sure that. We were affording that health insurance and making that health savings healthier. And there's a portion that the board pays and that's what you're seeing in line ten, and then there's a portion that employees pay. Towards that, to make those monthly payments.
What does OPEB stand for?
Other.
Other post-employment benefits.
True. Yeah. Retiree.
Retiree.
Alright, retiree benefits, alright, yeah.
Old person's employee benefits.
Workers' comp and town pension for some reason is together. And, you know, we look at what the actuals were from. Twenty four to kind of realize what we should be putting aside, and it looks like twenty six is basically the same as what we had projected for twenty five, so there's. A slight increase in that area. Social Security and Medicaid, that really is tied in directly to the staffing, so we get that number because of who we have staffed today currently. And then other benefits, I wish Lori was here, but. Just trying to think.
She's online.
Oh, she is?
Yeah.
Oh. Is she, can she chime in? Lori, other benefits, we just talked about. Health insurance, workers' comp and town pension, social security and Medicaid, and then other benefits.
Yeah, other benefits or any other ancillary benefits that we pay for. You know, for the employees that don't fall under health insurance and workers' compensation and town pension. So life insurance, disability insurance, those types of things. Yeah.
This teacher retirement, state unemployment tax, which is a calculation, tuition reimbursement and mentor stipend. But we've only got two figures on here, one's teacher retirement, which we're lowering one oh two, hundred and two thousand dollars.
Are, are you in two twenty two to two twenty seven?
Yeah, actually two twenty two and two twenty four are the active numbers. But they're, they're the numbers that are changed. We do have figures for state unemployment tax, which we haven't changed, and mentor stipend, which hasn't changed, but. The big number driving that is. Teacher retirement drop is that, and that again must be the product of. Just how the personnel are working, the, the numbers.
That's correct, Dean. We're, we're anticipating less teacher retirements this year than last year.
But I think we're up to what, eight? And last year we had sixteen?
Right, correct, correct.
How good is our record with that, by the way? I'm sure it's odd, but I'm just curious, what's our experience been in predicting? Retirements or non-retirements?
I don't know. I think we've done a pretty good job. We weren't expecting as many this year. Because we've had quite a few the past several years, but now with the new social security law, there are some people who are benefiting from that. And are able to retire, you know, because they get both their social security now and teacher retirement. And so some people will have a career in another area and then join on to the state plan, and that, you know, is a nice benefit for them.
Yeah, I'm just curious if you say, well, we expect this, so have we been off by like a factor of two, a couple, or?
Lori, I think we've been pretty close, don't you think?
Yeah, we have. We typically look at the workforce, see who's eligible to retire and make a prediction based on, you know, indications that we've heard along the way from staff who's. You know, they'll usually let us know when they're getting close. So that's, you know, typically we've been able to predict pretty closely, like Susan said. What we're seeing this year is, we actually probably would have had less, but we're seeing some teachers. Come forward and decide to retire, as Susan mentioned, because of the elimination of the social security offset. What that means is previously they're. Basically, they didn't get the social security benefits. It was offset against their teacher pension. Now that provision is being eliminated. And in the process of doing so, you know, it does create an additional benefit to teachers who have had maybe a second career in teaching where they paid quite a bit into the. Social Security system. So they'll now be eligible, eligible for those benefits, benefits in addition to the teacher retirement. So we are seeing a few more. We probably would have anticipated about five or six this year. But we'll probably finish somewhere between eight and ten, maybe, maybe twelve. We will know tomorrow for sure. Tomorrow is the deadline to submit by, so we'll know if we have eight or ten by tomorrow.
And even though there is that contractual kind of deadline to make that, you know, retirement. Come to fruition this year, we do sometimes have people who later on decide afterwards too. Alright, so when you look at the purchase services. I again want to orient you to what the actuals were in twenty four, and then what we budgeted for this year. And then what we are predicting to budget for. And just even looking at instructional services. I think that. You know, it's up by about fifteen thousand dollars or eight point seven percent. But I think they looked at some trending too in getting this ready, and so. You know, in this case, you know, it's a. It's a small percentage. When you look at professional services back in twenty four, the actuals were about half a million dollars. We only budgeted about three hundred thousand, but as you remember, we were really, really scrutinizing the budget last year because it was so high. So I think in some cases, we may have underfunded, but. In trying to readjust for twenty six, we brought it to four oh six, so the reason why it's a hundred thousand more is because. We took it down from what the actual was in this year.
So when we're under budget, we under budgeted hypothetically on line sixteen. But we had these people, where did we, where did we come up with the money to pay for them? Where was the transfer from?
Well, we'll, we'll be keeping track of that because we've encumbered funds, as you know, so every month when you get. Your object code, we can look at that to see how we're doing as we go through the year. I don't have that number in front of me of, you know, to date. But we do keep track of that. So we'll, we'll be seeing as we get closer to the end of the year and by using the encumbrances. How close we are. And then other professional services, it actually was seven hundred and fifty six thousand dollars back in twenty four. We brought it down to five seventy five, and I think we've readjusted based on trends to six seventy three. So that's brought it up. Slightly, I think this year, and Lori, you can correct me, but I think this year we were really trying to. Look at what our needs were and trying to really predict this based on trends and some actuals on what we thought we needed for next year. Would you say that's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then OTPT services, again, that's been pretty steady. If you look across, it's been in the seven hundred thousand dollar range. It's actually down by nineteen thousand. For next year. Based on the trends. Legal services. We actually spent in twenty four, a hundred and six thousand dollars. And we put in seventy one thousand for this year, but we kind of readjusted it for next year at a hundred and ten thousand again. As we're going through this year, we can see what that is. We are expecting a negotiation with the IT, maintenance, custodial and secretary. So that's gonna be coming up here that we're gonna have to pay attention to. I'm not sure of the start date. Lori, do we know if that's gonna start within this fiscal year or next? Is that why we've added it for next year?
It is gonna start this year. It, it depends on if it rolls into next year, depending on how negotiations go.
Okay, so you think we're gonna start it in the spring then, or?
Yes, correct.
Okay, alright.
May I ask, do we know what we're, are we paying by the hour?
For legal fees? Yes.
Do we know what the rate is?
There's different rates for different lawyers in Floyd's firm. Some work specifically on special education. Lloyd really works with the board. And then he also works with negotiations, of course.
I ask because I keep mentioning the council, but years ago. What, one of the first things you do as a council is you choose a town attorney and there was a rate that Sussman Shapiro charged. I don't think it was the actual individual's lawyer's rate, individual lawyer's rate. It was, we're Sussman, we're providing you with the soup to nuts representation for municipality. Here's our hourly rate, and that's how that went. Now, I don't know whether there were. There were other rates for specialized services, but there was a rate that we were told about.
I can look into that to see if the rates are different from the different folks.
I just activated my Zoom link, so I can share the screen. Project what we're talking about.
Oh.
Oh, you can put the sheet up?
Thank you.
Oh yeah, that'd be great.
You're such a treasure.
Yes.
I have no idea how to do that.
So our athletic officials are up by two hundred and fifty dollars.
Outrageous.
And our computer network system. Was one seventy four thousand for twenty four, but we, I think Clint really took some reductions last year, so. We were trying to rectify that and get it more within reason of what the needs are, so that's based on. The software needs the two sixty four. Which that one hundred and sixty five. Percent is. Pretty high.
But it's ninety thousand dollars more than it was in twenty four, so what does that represent?
I have to find out what, which software. I mean, the software that we use, or it's compute, no, it's computer network system. So that's a Clint question.
Is somewhere in the budget, have we put in for the new Munis system? I need, have we put aside any money towards the purchase of a new financial software?
No, we've put that in a CIP. And we've sent it to John Burton. We've talked to John Burton about that, and they're looking to. Looking at upgrading Munis and having a kind of parallel platform for both the town and the school district, which I think will really help with communications. And getting numbers back and forth and less error, human error. So.
Lori has kind of hand up.
Lori?
I just wanted to loop back to the question on computer network services. I'll, I'll let Clint clarify. But my understanding is this, this line item, as well as the net, the IT equipment line item, were items typically. Supported by DOD funds, and that's, I believe, what's driving the ninety thousand dollar increase, but we can let him clarify for sure. But my understanding is we've had to pick up that additional cost because the DOD funds won't be available.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
On that topic, I do have a question. So we've heard presentations from Clint about various. Hardware, also software, and software is not nothing, it's something. I don't remember as I sit here. Whether we have the ability to set up, if we had a schedule, for example, for obsolescence. We're gonna have Chromebooks for so long, we're gonna have software licenses for so long, et cetera. To fund on a regular ba, on an annual basis, put money away, if you will, for that rainy day, so we don't get these. Explicit hits, hey, we've got to overhaul all the Chromebooks, or a third of the Chromebooks, or we gotta get all new licenses this year, but for. So for five years, we're nice and quiet, and then it's time to upgrade, bam. Is there any way to smooth that out? I just don't remember, don't remember whether we had that capability. I know the town does. It doesn't pay for new squad cars all in one year. It puts the money away, or should be putting the money away on a regular basis, so the money's there. Do that. Lori has the answer.
Lori has a lot of answers.
To answer your question, Dean, I believe that's what Clint has done. He's gone through his. Technology replacement plan and prioritize those items that are necessary. I, I can't say that we put money aside for that. I realize that's part of your question, that, that might be a not lapsing fund question. But I know in prioritizing the current needs, he has a technology plan that identifies exactly the aging of all the equipment and what needs to be addressed first.
Right, yeah, more just in the funding side, smoothing the side of that.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
Well, I think the funding would be this year, we're gonna take care of this, and then next year we'll take care of that. And we've always had the DOD to help support that. So hopefully we'll get that back again.
That's the wild card, but the town avoids that, you know, we're gonna be buying this truck, that squad car by actually, or supposed to be anyway, putting money away. So that, because you know in ten years we'll get another squad car, so rather than get to hit that year, we saved up for it all these years.
And Sam, you do something similar to that, right, with your trucks and cars, like you try to. You know, pace it out over time, so that we're not buying them all at once.
Well, that's, that's if you can control the purchase and the obsolescence. I'm talking about actually having the. The financial backstop to that one, so we're. The, the goal will be that you pay the same every year. It's like taking your, people who have gas bills. Every source will say, you know, pay two hundred bucks every month kind of thing, regardless of what your actual usage is. Then they readjust the following year for your actual usage, even if it goes up or go down, to smooth out your bills. Anyway. There's a name for it.
A budget plan.
What's that?
A budget plan.
Yeah, budget, B word. I'm sure there's an accounting term for it, I just can't think of it.
Sinking fund?
That sounds nice.
It has a nice nautical feel.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, on, on the software question. I just, would my disclaimer reminder that, you know, we haven't actually voted on what software we're gonna go for. It sounds great that Munis, and if there's an opportunity to partner with the town on that. If they're gonna upgrade their system and there's a chance for us to get on that, I think that's great, but we haven't actually like. Done that as a board yet.
Well, probably if we can find time, even during this process, to give you information regarding it. And the expertise from the business department. I know Ray has worked with it, Irene had worked with it. And there's not a whole lot of school software out there. So, you know, for business purposes that are really that good. And this one I keep hearing just really communicates well with the town side.
Well, maybe it's the thing we could just handle pretty quickly on the next regular meeting and just, you know, put it up there. Have a quick review of the situation. I mean. I remember one night with the ad hoc committee, I think Jen, you were not there, it was just me and Mike, and we did. Brainstorm and did some research online and came up with some names and some other alternatives and, and has some pros and cons on one of our sheets. I could present that and put it in the agenda packet, just so that we could kind of just run through it, run through it. I mean, I think. Munis has the inside track for multiple reasons, what you just said and everything you just said, actually, including the partnership with the town. I'm inclined to go with Munis, but I also just want to kind of, you know. Stay faithful to the process, and that was like the last remaining thing that the ad hoc procedure committee had wanted to kind of have the, the board handle.
And I know that you've talked about how the town lays out the budget book and they just basically, the reports from Munis, they're not recreating the wheel like we're doing here.
Right, so that, that could.
So that's another.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm ninety nine percent there.
Yeah.
But I just wanna.
But I think it's a good discussion. I think that's probably, we'll talk to Bev about getting that on.
Yeah, it is, the software is kind of board software. It's not like we're talking about classroom software.
No, no, it's definitely run our business department.
Yeah, multiple options last year, so it's appropriate.
Okay.
I mean.
I think we can handle it pretty quickly.
We could always invite the vendor to do a presentation. I mean, they want to sell, right? So we invite them in for half an hour, an hour, and then we can understand how it integrates with the town's network. It's a presentation, shouldn't be charging us anything.
So I think, yeah, I think that the town is gonna work with the board and the vendor, especially to see what that would look like. And what that would cost.
And that would be probably.
It's not about cost, this is just try to understand functionality.
Yeah.
Yeah. And has the town. Floated the idea of like helping, I mean, would that be a, a shared reduction of cost for both the board?
It could be, it really could be, and you know, and it's really being considered in a CIP, which is also good news for us. So, yeah.
As long as there's a corresponding memorandum of understanding to go along with this, that we have clear defined parameters.
Alright. So next, property services, that's your department there. I know you've talked about it before, Sam. But I think you, you had done a lot of good work on. Taking the actuals from twenty-four and making sure that. We, you know, had the funds in the next year. You can see, we had done some reduction of funds in this year and now. We're kind of getting back up to more like the twenty-four number. Did you wanna say anything about that?
Sam, can you unmute your mic?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The bigger, the bigger number was in the repair maintenance services. We had. Trying to get back, caught back up after with some equipment that. Needs to be taken care of regarding. The HVAC systems on, on schools.
Oh, that was the additional HVAC system based on legislation?
Yeah.
For testing was there? Okay. And then we talked a little bit about rental the other night.
Yeah, this isn't all mine, but some of this is mine. A very small portion of this is mine, but that would be for rental of. Lifts or those sorts of things, equipment that we don't have in order to service the buildings with. When we do the lights at the football field, for instance, we gotta get a hundred foot lift to go up there and do those lights, that sort of thing. But it's on a temporary basis, not long term. We also rented a generator for the middle school. When that generator was down. As a backup to the, the emergency services, the. Fire suppression system, et cetera.
And transportation is a little bit down. I had said, I think we saved a bus, but. Oh, okay, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Jen.
This is just regular trash, right? Ernie's still covering trash related to the cafeteria? Didn't he mention that he ended up absorbing some of the trash costs? I thought Ernie came in at one, one of our meetings and stated that he ended up absorbing some of the costs related to trash. So this trash is just like regular trash removal? Or am I remembering something incorrectly?
I think at the time we were talking about him taking the trash at, just at Mary Morrison's school that, that.
Just at Mary Morrison, okay. So this is dis- this is district trash. Okay.
So before we get off property services.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I'm looking at the, the actual breakdown in the back pages. Figure out, you know, just sort of looking at that hundred, I'm focusing on that hundred thirteen thousand dollar increase since. And in general, I guess we're trying to get twenty-five, twenty-six more in line with twenty-three, twenty-four based on experience. So is that true for basically the components of that number? So for example, grounds repairs. Are gonna be going up almost twenty-five thousand dollars. Basically, it's a ten percent increase in grounds repairs. So are you anticipating basically, in other words, are we, are we adopting a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget figure for grounds repairs? Because that's a good idea, or you're anticipating new? You know, something new. Nothing new, just, just keeping up with what, what we haven't been. Same thing would be true of heating, heating plumbing repairs, that's going up sixty-five percent. We've had a lot of.
We have an boiler problem this morning in northeast.
Boilers, yeah. So hike, so hiking that up thirty-one thousand dollars, you can, that's, that you're, you're saying that that'd be a wise decision to basically. And again, these numbers, they're still lower than they were. I think they're just about all of them. Well, a couple of them are not, but most of them are lower than the, than the twenty-three, twenty-four figures. So it looks like you're trying to get back to, you know, the earlier numbers.
And I think we've had to offset some things. I mean, when a boiler goes, you gotta repair it. But, you know, there have been things that, because we've reduced the budget, you haven't been able to do. So you're really gonna pay for it one way or the other sooner or later.
Now, I can see where grounds repairs is a nice even two hundred and seventy thousand dollar figure. You're, you know, you're. Trying to look into, trying to look in the future, trying to be safe. But under other property services, the, the proposed budget, even though it's less than twenty-three, twenty-four. It's forty-nine, nine, nine, seven point two six. That's a, a ninety-five percent increase over the prior year. It almost looks like something specific is anticipated in there. That was a number that was given to me by Irene based on the trend. So that was a trend. That's, that's a calculated figure. That's not a, like a, a quote from somebody from some contractor saying, that's gonna cost you this much. Yeah, that was a, that was a number that Irene came up with. Okay, so that could just as easily have been rounded up to say fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to get an idea of what's driving some of these increases. Thank you.
And then transportation, you know, we had paid for the transportation in the new contract upfront. In the first two years, we actually had got it. At the first year was outrageous, but we were able to kind of get it in the first two years. And then there was a five percent increase this coming up year, and then it's gonna go down to three percent for the last two years. So. We're actually, and I think we've saved a bus, so that's why you see that. Negative on the transportation for schools.
Just cuz it's nine o'clock, can we just, since we went through all this last night, can we just see if anybody has questions? Or do we, do we wanna go through it again?
Well, I see Dean going to the function code and I, I really wanna get you to the function code document, cuz that's gonna give you more clarity.
But not tonight.
But not tonight. We don't have it tonight cuz I wanna get the narratives in, I wanna get the FTEs in, I got a little more work to do on that. So.
But it seems that we talked about a lot of this last night. So if there's, is there new questions on these pages?
No, but take your time and look at it when we get to the function code, you know, if you see anything highlighting, talk about it.
Yeah, cuz we're gonna talk about this twice. If we go through it this long, we go through it again.
Tell the way you're looking at it, at the back of the book.
Oh, I'm curious. See a number, where'd it come from? I looked at the object numbers and I go back.
Yeah.
So. Salaries and wages on those pages, I don't wanna. Did we get into that? We didn't get into that last night, correct?
Salaries and wages, where are you?
Two dash four.
Which page?
Where you're starting on the object.
Oh, I am. All right, sorry. I. All right, so these were just. Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Jen.
Last night I had asked about the summary from the principals. Were you able to produce that?
Summary?
The summary of like your two million dollar ask?
Oh, we haven't done that yet. I, I talked to them today about it and they're gonna do some work on it and highlight the ones that. The priorities for this year. And then we're gonna give you the whole document, so you can see. But they're gonna be working on it.
Is, if I may, is, is that gonna be number that's going to inform the number we have in front of us?
Nope.
Or is that gonna be?
It's additional.
An additional, I suppose, afraid of.
Yeah, that's why I've been pushing for it.
You wanted it, you got it.
So that's on top of what's already here, site budgets.
Lori.
Hi, in, in response to Jen's question, we do have it. It's almost ready. We just wanted the principals to prioritize it for you. We spoke to them, as Susan mentioned, we spoke to them about it today. We'll be finalizing that list soon and we can get that out to you.
Okay. Thank you.
So what else did we have? Well, there was another, the white tab. Let's do the next section. Which we already went, I think that was covered twice in here, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
As I feel like we looked at those charts earlier on.
Same charts.
And then after that. Would you have the specific staff, the staffing?
Lori, is your hand raised for a reason?
I apologize, forgot to take it down.
They're looking at the green tab with the staffing and I think I remember you saying that. We were going to make sure that the. Certified staff and the non-certified staff were all in there, including those from grants. Is that, do I have that right?
Yes, so that it would tie to the front pages.
Yeah, I apologize. Which one's green tab? Is that the FTE schedules?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we're in the process of updating the school sheets based on the feedback in last night's meeting. We should have those soon. And they'll tie out to the FTE schedule that's in the green tab.
Okay.
Would there be any utility indicating that the numbers have shifted from the prior year?
So, there was a question about the shifts in the FTEs. From last, from this current year to next year and how we could actually showcase that. I did explain how the pair professionals is kind of always a moving number and it moves not only. In the number, I think I recall you saying, I think we were. Year at one eighty-five and this year we're at two oh five. And I know that we're having a hard time getting our pairs too.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
So, and it changes by school. So you might have a child move out of Charles Barnum, maybe they go over to Mary Morrison or, sorry, ooh, that's a blast from the past. They might go to Mystic River and so the pair would go with them, so that is also moving. Or you might have a military child come in who has, needs a one-to-one and so you've had to hire someone. So I, I would say that's the group that we see the most movement in.
Yes, I would say that group's pretty dynamic based on student needs and IEP requirements.
The, the other place that, if I'm the only one thinking this way, no problem. But for secondary, we are treating the secondary merging GMS and Fitch together. I think it would be useful if we had GMS, separate building, have GMS and then have Fitch as separate, so we can see what kind of movement. You have eight retiring hypothetically. Five of them are coming from one or four of them are coming from one school. That has some implications, you know, which subject areas are going to be, it, it may not be implications for the budget, but there are implications for what we need to be talking about.
Right, right, that's right. So. I think in the function code, do we break out those FTEs, Lori, by school or just by secondary?
They are broken out by function and. In the function document and that is, you know, obviously all of the elementaries have the elementary FTEs. And then the secondary does break out Groton Middle and Fitch High School FTEs.
But you also have the document that's broken out by school as well.
I apologize, I misread it. It is there.
Okay.
I'm guilty as charged or guilty as not yet charged.
You're not guilty. We just answered our own question, Lori.
Don't be guilty.
It's part of my culture group.
Exactly, I was gonna say.
I know also, Lori, we mentioned last night that. It looks like there might be a reduction of FTEs in elementary, but it's really too early to see. And there have been some requests that they're gonna see soon. We need another special educator based on FTEs. Or the number of IEPs that we have in Mystic River and Thames and. You know, so that's still pretty dynamic. We're not, you know, we're not ready to. Take away any of those FTEs till we're really sure that we don't need them, right?
That's correct. I mean, the, we have, we have two, we're monitoring two. Elementary positions based on enrollment, but it is a little too early to tell. And then also we wanna review the wish list as well, cuz there are some requests on there. That's correct. I think Jay has a question.
Yeah, Jay?
So a few years ago, when we decided to increase the transparency of the budget, we added. Those boxes to the function code. And so can, rather than just say increase, can we, can we put the building? This building went up, this building went down, just itemize it. Boxes, so that when we're talking about that function, it's right there.
I think that's something we probably could do, Lori.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that. Yeah, absolutely. I think we have done some of that along the way, but we can certainly keep an eye on that. While we're working on the narrative.
Yeah, I definitely would on.
Yeah, go. Thank you. I'm sorry, Sam.
I'm in favor of that.
Where did the subs fit into this?
The subs aren't reported. The substitute, are the building subs reported on your FTE sheet, Lori?
They are not. They're, they are in the substitute line, which is just a lump number.
Yep. Was there anything else from this report, Adrian, when you were looking at it that you thought would be useful if we could? Showcase?
Yeah, so we had changes. But I think that this page, it's all encompassed in the next two pages, right? So for me, it would be easier just to switch to the next page with some questions. So this, it just basically split it up by certified and non-certified staff, which is what the next two pages are.
I could also mention, so it's really helpful in the narrative, because this happens a lot. To talk about Clint's. You know, this used to be in the DOD supplemental. It's now in the board's budget. This used to be a grant funded position. It's now in the board's budget, or this used to be in the board's budget. It's now in a grant funded. That's what the narrative was designed to do. So as we're looking at those function codes, the, the narrative box is right there explaining them to us. So I mean, I know it's a lot of information, but. That way we don't have to keep thinking, because a lot of times we ask for like a little view of something. You know, if we can, if we can highlight those large numbers in that narrative, then what we can put in that narrative. So we're not saying, especially when a number goes up. Just put it right in the narrative.
And if, if I could just build on that real quick, maybe not just saying it was just moved, but having like a, a date, a year. In the year, you know, FYE, whatever, this moved from a grant funded position to, that way. The document can become historical and it can be reused year after year. And so you can kind of get an idea of how much has been transitioned in the operating budget.
Also, I don't know whether this has happened this year, if anything has been reclassified from one object to another. So you're like, oh, what a lovely reduction over here. What's that increase over there?
Right.
I don't know if we have any of those this time, but because we've had a number of findings.
I do know that we, we've done some reclassification, right, Lori? To get it in a, in a place where it belongs. Get some positions moved around.
Um, yeah, we, we have had some of that movement. That's correct.
Reclassified at a high level, as in, you know, it goes from property service to something else, or reclassified as it was one object code, now it's a different object code. Are we regrouping object codes or are we changing object codes?
It's more like with the staffing, making sure that the staff is in the appropriate.
So you're keeping the same object code, you're just putting them in a different, larger box.
Right.
Okay.
And I think we'd even split out some of the boxes, like Lori and I were always together. And we've split up superintendent's part and then HR's part, just, it makes it easier. Cuz, you know, when, I don't wanna spend Lori's money and she doesn't wanna spend mine.
Your respective codes have.
Yeah, yeah.
I, like, I guess what would. I would like to see is like, you know, we had put a hundred thousand aside for IT last year, right? Like, if it's not being identified this year, where did that hundred thousand go? You had mentioned the three hundred thousand that we had invested in the reading. If that's not getting utilized this year for the reading. If that's not getting utilized this year for the reading, because that was like an additional investment, where did that three hundred thousand?
It did go for.
Oh, it went back to reading again. That's fine. So I was.
Oh, actually, I don't know that we added that. We didn't add the three hundred for this year because we already did it last year.
Okay, so then that was a savings.
There might, there might be a little bit, like with workbooks or things that are dispot, that are consumable. But we really did most of that work between the right to read grant and the money that the board had directed in there. We took care of that.
Yeah, no, it's just sort of like doing a walk. Um.
So Lori, can I ask you this question? Do you think that these two pages that we're looking at or these FTE sheets will change because you're going to look at the certified staff who is under, um, the operating and then make sure that we have the ones who are also funded by grants? Is that what you were saying?
It's already there, Susan.
Okay, is it?
It's on the bottom.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we've reconciled it based on what's currently happening between boarding.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's just the, the pages that are by school that we are just going to cross-reference. Is that right? Okay, thank you. Jen, Jen's got me.
And then, um, just a formatting issue on the non-certified staff under food service and treehouse. Um, the thirty-three fifty and the twenty-two is not showing up in the appropriate column, but it is showing up on the total. So that's just, um, I think somebody might have just typed it in on the total.
Which line are you?
Um, right.
It's on the second page?
It's on the non-certified staff. Um, the food service and the treehouse columns, it's showing zero, right? But if you look at the total enterprise, um, number, which should be a summation of that food and treehouse, you have the thirty-three, five and the twenty-two for, um, hot lunch program. It's just a formatting thing. I think it's not like that. I just don't want you to go out in a. So see here.
Yeah.
You have here, it carries across the one.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know. Which page are you guys on?
We're on the second page on non-certified staff.
Alright, mine got off.
See how, yeah, so like, um, the columns usually some.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just missing.
I see it, Jen. Yep.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just want it when you guys present or, you know.
We appreciate this.
You're welcome.
I have a few questions. This, on this page, I have a few questions. Um, so, bitch. It looks like you're losing nine paraprofessionals from twenty-eight down to nineteen. I'm just wondering where that, how, how that works? Or what the, how, what that's driven from.
You're saying because next year we're looking at nineteen?
Yeah, and, um, in this year's budget. We have twenty-eight.
What about Groton Middle?
Groton Middle, we're adding five.
Adrian, can I ask a question? You're looking at the paraprofessional column in the non-certified schedule.
Correct, yeah. So like the, whatever that is, the seventh and eighth or something like that lined down under secondary, Groton Middle and Fitch High.
Yeah, so I think some of the issue that you're seeing there is, well, I know some of the issue that you're seeing there is a number of paras are classified under the IDEA grant. There's forty-five there.
Oh, that's right.
Those have been lifted out of the school numbers and then put under the grant. So I think that's what you're seeing and why it looks like a reduction, but it's really not. It's because they are classified under a grant.
So there were forty-five, but they're split out between all the schools, right?
Right.
That number's not changing. Last year that number under IDA was forty-six, so that number doesn't really change, you know, changes one.
But you're saying that the people who are in that forty-five count may be coming from Fitch High School, right?
That's correct. When you reconcile the total number, they're all there. It, it's just the way it shakes out between which ones are in the forty-five, which ones are, uh, charged to the board in the individual schools. And there is quite a bit of fluctuation, as Susan has mentioned before, amongst the schools because students will leave the district. So when a student with an IEP leaves, that para may be reassigned to another school if there is no new student assignment. So there is a lot of movement between the schools. Um, you know, for the para counts year over year.
Yeah, well, that just seemed like a, so, so is it on the other sheet, the FTE report? How many paras are at Fitch and?
Yeah, we're updating the school sheets that will show all of the paras that are at the individual schools. Um, you know, based on last night's request. It didn't include, um, for whatever reason, historically, the non-certified grant positions weren't listed in the school counts on the school sheets that are in the budget book that were added last year. So we're going to go ahead and add those. So it'll give a clear picture of what the total paras are by each school.
Alright. And then, um, sent, it says we're adding seven, um, aides to central office, which weren't there last year.
That's the transition, is that the transition academy and the Apex Academy? I don't see any paras at central office.
No, I'm under classroom slash bus aides.
Oh.
Those are, there's seven down there under CO. Um, those are all new or they weren't in last year's.
Yeah, Adrian, I'll double check those, uh, for you to see exactly where those are coming from.
And then the tutors, there's two, both of those tutors look like they're new in central office as well.
So we do have the Apex program and.
Yeah, I, I believe some of it is that, but I just want to double check that for you.
Alright. Um, it looks like we're adding, um, well, paras, tutors and aides are all kind of lumped together, but in all the elementary schools, Charles Barnum's getting, you know, point seven five additional. The, all the others are, you know, two point seven five to four point two five additional in that total thing, but with tutors and paras together, it's a little tough to know. Uh, actually, yeah, that, this is a question that, there's a col, the second column says tutors and then the three, four, five, six says total paras, tutors, aides. Oh, nevermind, sorry. That's just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we had a full night.
Um, well, then there's certified staff if we can go to that page. Does anyone else have any questions on the non-certified staff? So my personal biggest question here was, yeah, I think we got jumped on. So under special ed teachers, there's a new column that says bilingual, hearing impaired, psychologists, speech and language, sped support services. So, yeah, are they special ed teachers as well, basically?
They're all of those things.
Right, the special ed teachers are broken out into a separate column. So if you see, it says classroom teachers, special education teachers. And then the column you're referring to, all of those positions were typically captured and grouped together. I just don't think it was clearly identified in the heading that all of those positions were in there. So we did add that so it was a little bit clearer which positions were included in that column, because they do get grouped together.
So that, that column, the bi, starts with bilingual hearing. Did that all used to just be included in special ed teachers?
They were grouped together, correct. I got to look at my notes, but I believe, yes, they were all, let me, I will double check the last year's schedule. But yes, I believe we broke it out this year. So it was a little bit clearer.
Alright, so. Yeah, the, um, so, so my big question is going down and totaling those two columns um, of special ed t, teachers, basically district wide. We have eighty-five. And last year we had ninety-four and a half, so we have nine and a half less. Than we did last year.
I don't think we've lost. Are you talking about this multiple, the bilingual and?
Yeah, so that, so what I did is added special ed teachers to that one, to that bilingual hearing.
So you added the thirty-three to the nineteen?
There's sixty-one to the, sixty-one to thirty-four.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yep, so district wide.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and last year there was that, that bilingual column wasn't there. It was just special ed, but it was ninety-four. So it's, it's nine and a half fewer. Unless there were special ed teachers captured somewhere else. Or our special ed teachers captured, captured.
So I'm sixty-one and thirty-four is your ninety-five for this year, right? Or next year? And what did you say?
Is that, yeah, never mind, math error.
Oh.
Thanks for catching that.
Well, I didn't know I caught anything.
And so, that was a big concern of mine, so.
Adrian, I had a question.
Yeah, Jen.
Um, where are the nurses? I couldn't find them.
Where are nurses in all of this? They're not, they wouldn't be considered certified. Were they, are, are they certified?
They are not certified. I'm just double checking if they're on the non-certified schedule somewhere here. That's a good question.
Good eyesight. Boy, you guys are good picking up this stuff.
Well, we just don't want anyone to be forgotten.
No, we don't.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Let me, let me double check on that.
Oh, good question.
I bet they're not there because we never had them before.
Yeah.
That's probably true.
Get them in there.
Get them in there.
Put them in there so we can, um, mention them.
Buddy in the boat.
Yeah.
They all RNs or are these LPNs?
Are they RNs or LPNs, Lori?
They're RNs. Yeah.
And thank you for hanging out with me tonight. I'm glad you were able to get on. I know you had other things, but I appreciate it.
I missed the answer to that question. I, do we?
RNs.
Huh?
There are RNs.
RNs?
We don't know where they are.
Oh, they're not, we haven't.
I, we gotta find them. She's gonna look for them.
Very good.
Yeah.
Alright.
I will double check. I believe they populated the schedule to dismatch what was in here previously. So if they're not there, we'll definitely get them added.
Exactly why, yeah.
Alright.
Good catch.
Um. Does anyone have any more questions on staffing? So now we'll circle back to the, uh, the, the, um, meeting. And how about if we were just to call it that we're allowing public comment?
Where? For which meeting?
For the twenty-first.
The twenty-first.
Where we said we were going to.
Comment period.
Add a public comment.
So we have it in our draft, and I'm pretty sure that we actually voted on adding public comment or of some sort.
But if it's just for input, it'll make it easier to package it.
I lost that page now. Yeah, so we have it, we have it listed in, in our draft budget calendar as public hearing. But how about if we just call it public comment? Is that, does anyone know the rules well enough to, can we just allow that on?
What kind of public comment are we expecting? Are they?
Public comment on the budget.
Yeah, public comment on the budget. So rather than calling it a hearing, we'll just call it, we're, because that's what we really want, right? Is to just to hear what people have to say.
Shouldn't there also be a presentation of something?
Yeah, I mean, how, how are they going to comment if they really haven't heard?
We can structure the meetings by the presentation.
Your presentation is agenda item, whatever.
I think two slides, probably your financial slide, this one. And my opinion, that, that blue one, the drivers.
Yeah, I like the drivers too.
And I think that's it. I don't know, that's.
I don't know. I've got to do the revenue. I'm so excited about that.
Cause like the more slides she goes over, the more they're, you know.
Yeah, like a ten or fifteen minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do.
What we're thinking.
Will, this, the superintendent's budget be online for people to review?
Yes, I wrote that in my notes. Get that online.
Alright, so that, I think.
But I want the cleaned up version, the one you're getting on, you know.
Right, yeah.
Do you think that the radials would take a thirty-second or fifteen, thirty-second PSA at no charge?
Or?
Groton residents are advised that the budget is now posted on the school district website in anticipation of a public comment period followed by discussion in addition to the usual public hearing.
Who would this be?
Radio.
What's that? Well, what's?
You feed, you feed it, you feed it to all of them.
Yeah, you, who knows how to call Pandora?
Spotify.
That gets a lot of traction.
My radio spots, they're not cheap. I don't want to give them away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's just send out as much in, you know.
I will.
What we can do.
Yeah.
You know, at the district, we should notify people.
Is this perfect time?
Anybody have any other questions? I think Dr. Ackman has a state, has a, uh, proposal.
Not too long, Dr. Ackman, please.
Gracie.
Yeah.
You called us captives.
We, we're not going anywhere until we hear from you.
You said it.
Alright, thank you.